All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we will have a invocation from Pastor Allison Farah.
May we pray. Our heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day, for the blessings that you afford us, and we thank you for the city of Hamlet. Thank you for our elected officials, for the businesses, the churches, the families, the individuals, all the people that make this city the place that it is. I pray for this meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they make decisions for the good of our city and for the people who live here. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Allison.
All right, adoption of agenda. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Then approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, comments from attendees. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak tonight?
Comment from attendees?
I'm sorry? No, Gerard, we're going in order. I just remind you that you have five minutes.
Appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gerard Anthony Morrison. Beloved citizen of Charlotte Street. Wanted to remind you all about October 5th, first Saturday in October. This will be our sweet 16th John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest. And our goal always is to identify talent and do what we call polish the diamonds in our own backyard. We deal with 21 counties, 13 in North Carolina, eight in South. We highlight different folks across the board, musicians, poets, artists, dancers. This will be our second year with a fashion show. Like to bring a special attention to a designer from Hamlet who was on Oprah, who was my classmate from 1986, and Angela Medlin. Going to be trying to highlight some things from her this year, too. So always, she's also the one who did our logo back in the day when we first started. So also for John Coltrane, we want to bring more attention to J. Kenneth Lee. First black to finish Chapel Hill's law school. He groomed Henry Frye, who became the first black chief Supreme Court justice from Ellerby. He helped groom Julius Chambers, who became, he was an attorney, also became the chancellor at North Carolina Central University. Also Romulus Murphy. So a lot of the black legal history comes from within an hour's radius. Dan Blue, first black Speaker of the House, is from Lumberton. The, I forgot her name right now, but the first African-American female on the Supreme Court is from Brunswick County. So if you notice by the time you do an hour's radius, all that richness is right here. Then also we're going to be highlighting Tom Wicker more, and Erby Long have been talking more. Local historian, I think he doesn't get his attention. He's a humble guy, but man, does he know some stuff. And Tom Wicker, who's from, you know, from Hamlet Avenue, one street over from Charlotte Street. But also Erby Long grew up, Erwin Long, he grew up on Hamlet Avenue also. So want to bring that attention. Also, want to encourage you all to really look at having a combination of a district and at-large council. That helps you all when you're running for office, you have least interests, at least barriers to entry. You all know campaigns cost, don't they? It gets time consuming. This way, we have a phase for incumbents right now. All you all live in kind of just different areas anyway. So we have a combination of, I'm proposing three districts and two at-large. That way, you still have the mayor. So still have the six, but then the next four years, hopefully, we can phase that out. So when that comes about, we can go ahead and do that. This way, you've got more representation, less work for you all, and that's where people can see the citizens more. To this year, I can say in these 16 years, Mr. Maurice Stewart and Abby Covington are the only ones who've been to the John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest. And Oscar, he's been to some of the other meetings. That's three, we're 50 percent, 16 years. Like to see more. When you were here when we first started, and Abby, you were here when we first started this. So like to see that turnout there. And with the district system and at-large, all municipalities, and if you notice tier-one economies, you're going to find one of the things they do have in common is all of them have at-large candidates. When we go ahead and get, remember, part of this stuff that happened with the Boston Tea Party was taxation without representation. This way, we are representing, but this way, you get to kind of fine-tune it a little better. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Good day.
Thank you, Gerard. Would you like to come up? And if you would, just state your name when you do.
My name is Annie Crim. I was going to the Hamlet's senior citizen, I mean, center, and I was put out.
Ms. Annie, how you spell your last name?
C-R-I-M. And they had a meeting, and when they came out of the meeting, they said that, she said that I couldn't come back, but I hadn't did anything. I didn't do nothing. But she said I couldn't come back, so I asked her, tried to ask her, what did I do that day? And she couldn't tell me nothing. Samantha couldn't tell me nothing. So I say, what did I do that made you throw me out? Well, you can't come back, because you was nothing but a bully. So I, that's under government, and I'm a senior citizen, I'm 80 years old. I should be able to go to the center every day if I would like to. I don't bother nobody. We go in there, play cards, we eat, and we have fun. But she don't like me, and I know it, the way she, me, I'm the only one.
Ms. Annie, who is she?
Samantha. Amanda. Amanda, I'm sorry. And the idea of deals, it's wrong. That's under government. I should be able to go down there and enjoy myself and eat with the rest of the ladies that's down that I brought me today. And what can I do? All I want to do is go back, for her, go back to the center so I can go back in and start exercising and dance. That's what I do, and that's what I want to go back in there and do. Now, I done did everything, and so if anything else I have to do, I'm going to do it because it's not right. I didn't do nothing that day. The day she got me down for, I didn't do nothing. I came in, and I didn't do nothing. I was talking, eating, I left my food and went over there, and when I got over to the other side, she gonna say, well, you can go home for the rest of the day. And I, so I just, you know, went back over there to pick up stuff, to pick up the food that was over there. And I got the food, and I come and sit down. So I said, she told me that I should go home. And they said, well, you ain't did nothing. Why should you go home? You haven't did nothing. So we were playing, start playing Uno, and as we were playing, so I played for about another hour, and I left. And Friday morning, when I came in, she gonna hand me a notice saying that I couldn't come back in. And then I, we came, they had a board meeting, and at the board meeting, that's what she called me, a bully. And I said, well, tell me what I done. Tell me. But she couldn't come up with nothing. She said, you broke every rule. The rules she have, she, that's rules for somebody in prison or something. We shouldn't have to, where is a senior citizen, we should have the right to go in. We are old people heading around having fun, so why, so why is she going to put me out? And block the rest of the centers. She got it so you can't go to the other center. That's not fair. And she stand up, and when she got something to say to you, she don't talk to you, she scream at you. She don't talk to you, she scream at you. And when she get through screaming, I mean this, that, this right here, you know? You're like, we're children, we're in prison. Something, we need help. That ain't the way you do, do the same. I've been down there all these years down there to the scenes. I never once got, once I got calling off for something I didn't even know nothing about. And they asked me, asked me, did I know what happened? And I say, no, I didn't hear. I don't know what happened, one time. And now since she been down there, she done put me out one time before, and now she don't put me out for good. I'm not going to stand still and do nothing about this, okay? So I'm asking y'all, please help me to get back into the center. Thank you. I got witnesses, if you want to hear from them, people.
Well, if anyone else would like to speak, they can come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Myleen Castro Cross, and I am a member of the seniors center, and I love it there. And I also love Annie Crim, and I miss her. We all do. We all miss her. I also love Amanda. She's the director, and she's doing a great job. She just got to work on a few things. One is how she talks to the seniors. She treats us like we're children. Maybe she worked with children before, I'm not quite sure. I think I heard that she worked with special needs. We're not special needs. I think that if she needs to talk to us, she should take us to the back and talk to us in private. And I say this because one day she handed me a piece of paper as I was about to leave, and that piece of paper said that I am not allowed to come back to the center for 21 days. She banned me from the center for three weeks, and it made no sense. One of the reasons that she gave was that I interrupted a line dance between Mary and Daisy, who have a little group called Southern Ladies. But Mary had asked me to join them, because I do work with her on Saturdays. She asked me, they were learning a new song, to join them that particular day. She didn't know this, and she listed that as a reason to suspend me for a week because I interrupted their dance. That's not what happened. Had she interviewed Mary, she would have learned the truth, and she would not have unjustly suspended me for a whole week for quote-unquote interrupting the group. And in fact, I have witnesses, because I was playing cards with, with some of these women. In fact, I think Annie was part of the group. We were playing cards, and I said, I'll join you in an hour. So I joined them in midway of the rehearsal, which is normally two hours. So anyway, so that was unjust. The second one was because someone got upset. And by the way, I talked to Mary, and I said, why don't you talk to her and tell her that that's not what happened? And she said, if she asks me, then I'll tell her. And the reason she said that was because she actually fears. There's a lot of fear going on with Amanda, because she suspended several people. And they're afraid to say the truth, to come forward with the truth, for fear of getting themselves suspended. So this, even though I love her and everything, there's some things she needs to work on, and this is definitely one of them. And then she suspended for another week because somebody got upset, and they got up and they made a ruckus, and it didn't make sense. It's very, very silly, but they were cleaning the tables, and the lady on this side handed me the cleaning materials to clean my section right here. And I said, we're about to start bingo, so I'm not going to clean the table. And I passed it on, because I had to sit there and breathe those fumes. So I passed it on to the person to my left. That person got upset. What's wrong with you? What's wrong with you? She said. And I said, there's nothing wrong. You could clean your table, I don't mind. But she got all upset and got up and everything, Amanda saw that and suspended me a week for that. I didn't do anything. Then the third time, that was because I called her attention that when we were playing volleyball, that she had made an error in the rules, I felt. And I said, can we look, and very respectfully, can we look at the rules to be certain? And I had them, because I had just reviewed them under my seat. And I, and she said, I don't have the rules. I said, well, I have them right here. And I handed to him. She read the rules, yet in the suspension letter, she said that I read the rules. I never read the rules. She read the rules. And she says, I'm right, and you're wrong, and that was it. I said, okay, well, then let's leave it at that. And then she actually put in the paper that I said, well, leave it like that. And that's not how I said it. I was very respectful, and there are witnesses to that, if you want to ask other witnesses about that. So anyway, it's just, even though I'd love her, she needs to work on how she speaks to the seniors, because we are her, how can I say? It's just like a teacher. She's working with the children. The children are the ones giving her a paycheck. We are the reason giving her a paycheck, and the whole idea is to get more seniors to come. And in fact, a lot of seniors have left, and a lot of them because of this.
Time is up. Thank you.
Ma'am, what's your first name?
I go by Mia, M-Y-A, Cross, C-R-O-S-S.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Michelle Roberts. Michelle with one L. And I'm a transplant to Hamlet. I'm from Connecticut. I think everyone has kind of heard through the rumor mill that I purchased the building that had once been Hail Mary's. What I'd like to do is see Hamlet revive its downtown area. I'm not looking to rock the boat or make waves. I'm looking to revive the downtown area just because I see that you guys have put a lot of money and effort into the railroad building and the downtown, and parts of the downtown. So what I'd like to do, and I need help to have done, is to move that project that started at the railroad station forward up Main Street. And let's just not, just Main Street, we got Hamlet and all the others. And so I'm just introducing myself. Michelle Roberts.
Where are you from?
Connecticut.
Thank you.
All right, and so that's what I'm looking for. We will be having an office on the first floor and probably residential units on the second floor and restaurant bar that's going to be operating at the place. So that's it. Just introducing myself.
Thank you for investing in Hamlet.
I would like Hamlet to invest in Hamlet now.
And a proposal would be great of what you would like to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When you come to be a housekeeper, over people, do you suppose to be over everything, I mean, into everything? If you go to play volleyball, you in there, too. And if you go to cook, you in there, too. And you can't do nothing without somebody hearing everything you do. Is that legal in North Carolina for somebody to do that? Because everything we do, if we sitting down here talking, she hear everything we say. Everything we say, she hear, and she'll come out with an attitude. And I don't think, I don't think it's right. I think the government, I know they listen to us, but I don't think we have a supervisor over us. We're not children. We are old people. We're only trying to act, have activity, do different things down there to the center. So what I want to know is that legal for somebody to take what you doing?
How does she monitor you?
She got a, what is it? A camera's on. Everything you, everything we say, she hear. And then when she hear it, then she get mad, because we done to say, somebody be done saying something wrong or saying something about her, the way she do it. But then she come out there screaming at us. And she over the choir. That ain't, people in the prison, they, they taking, have the people that's in the prison do it. But we, she in the choir. She in everything that we go to do. She's in it, and that's not right, fair to us, a senior citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number six, report from clerk as to ownership of 462 Lewis Breeden Boulevard for purpose of voluntary annexation. So I will now open the floor to the public hearing about the annexation. Is there any public comment?
Excuse me, Mayor, this is the step in the annexation process where the clerk certifies who owns the property, and then you set the public hearing date. And it has to be advertised unless that's already been done.
It has been done. The public hearing follows this, but the clerk would need to just to read the notice of sufficiency. Also, we have to develop her, Kevin is in the back, who can answer any questions.
So our clerk isn't here with, Mackenzie?
Yes.
Okay.
I've been designated to read it. To the City Council of the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, I, Heather Hawks, City Clerk, do hereby certify that I have investigated the petition attached hereto and have found as a fact that said petition is signed by all owners of real property lying in the area described therein in accordance, in accordance with General Statute 160A 58.1. In witness that whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Hamlet this day, the 13th of August, 2024.
Okay. Do we repeat the public hearing part, or?
No, it just.
Okay. Do we have any comments?
The property owners have asked us to annex it voluntarily. No, 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 just the city would have primary jurisdiction for certain situations on that property. It would be a part of the city.
So no public comments. Okay, we now close the public hearing. And now we can vote on the adoption of the ordinance 2024-04.
I have one question for Lane. As far as the utilities, they are out there, right? The sewer is out there, the water's out there.
Yes, sir.
There was no objection from the fire department, the police department, nobody in the city about that?
No, sir.
All right, do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept it.
I second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number nine, discussion of the depot office space rental. This was one item that was tabled from last month, and we wanted to get additional information, which I believe we have this month. So are there any questions, comments?
Mayor, I don't claim to be a realtor, but I tried to find comps. The closest comp that I think I could find was for the Patrick Building downtown. I shared that with you. It looked to be the same or slightly higher rate than what we were offering, and I think for the additional office space that they were requesting, I think 650 is reasonable for 548 square feet. And that would be my recommendation. Some of the comps that I had also in there from Rockingham, I'm not certain that those are comparable comps, but it's just we have a limited amount of office space to compare from. But based on that, I think what we're talking about is reasonable.
How many spaces is available?
Just the one.
What would we rent it for before?
500 a month. And I think that was, we had just done that one time, or to a tenant.
The $500 a month rental, I believe, was for the chamber, and I don't know if that might have been.
Well, actually, the chamber was less than that. It was 300.
Okay. And I think part of the thought process might have been there is the purpose of the chamber and redevelopment of the city. There was a lower rental rate because of that.
At the end of the day, that still should have come before us.
What chamber?
The rate reduction, in my opinion.
Well, and that was several years ago. I don't know what happened then or there, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I was just making a statement, that if it's going to be reduced, and we're in charge of reducing it, or whoever it's going to be reduced for, I think, should come before us.
So the question today is renting for how much? 650, okay. So that's what we're voting on. For the two spaces, 650.
Yes.
This is the person that has the space, that's paying the market, our value that we had, and they requested a reduction in that space.
They were wanting additional space at a lower rate than that.
Space next to it.
And then there was a question as to what's the fair rate to charge. I don't think we had good information. We talked about this before. I've done the best I can to give you what I think are comparable rates.
I think she's currently paying like 325, and she wants to rent the adjoining property for $250.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, that was basic. I don't know the exact numbers, but.
So do I have a?
Space is not rented at the present time.
No, sir.
When was the last time it was rented?
I'm not certain of that.
But it's been empty for some time, then.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
So what, what's the, I mean, what they want?
They want a reduction on.
They want a reduction, but I mean, how much are they talking about? They rent a space for what, 650?
No.
What they rent a space for?
I think she's renting for 325 now.
Oh, 325.
Right, and I don't quote me on that. I'm trying to find that sheet of paper in all of this stuff.
And now they, and now she wants to have to have.
Currently rents 208 square feet for $325 a month. And she wanted to rent the adjoining space, but she wanted us to reduce it, since she was already renting the space next to it. She wanted us to rent it to her for 250 a month. But, you know, usually you come up with a per-square-foot rental rate, because all of these offices are different sizes, and it makes sense to me that if they're going to be different sizes, and we've got a flat rate per square foot, then everybody's kind of on an equal playing field. But our question was, we didn't feel that reducing the rate was the thing to do. And then there was some question, I think, about possibly saying, well, is it better rented for that price or left empty?
And the 650 is for both spaces, too, so the current space and the adjoining property.
How big of a discount is it?
650 isn't a discount.
Well, 250 is about half. Half of what we, the last time we rented it.
I thought he just said that both of them were going to be 650.
But the two, the two together is 650. Um, and I think it's correct. It's 325 for what she's paying now.
I gave you the wrong figure. She is renting 205 at $500 a month, 340 square feet. She wants 208 square feet for 250 and it currently rents for 325. She wants it reduced $75 a month.
I just don't think you can make a president by reducing it, uh, rental cost. Something's better than nothing.
Yeah, that's true.
I'd like to ask the attorney. So in, in doing this, we, we really don't need to make any decision to discount that for one person. We should make a decision based off of the rent for each spot, right? The, in, in other words, we, we should set the price for that. And it, and, and so what I'm saying is, we shouldn't make a motion to reduce it for one person, but we can make a motion to reduce anybody that has a rental there to get the second rental cheaper. Is that?
You can do that.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I, I feel like that's what we should do, rather than make a decision for this one person to get it cheaper.
The, uh, the general rule is that the city is supposed to receive fair market value for property that it, that it leases. Uh, and my professional opinion is you should set, you should set the rate anywhere you want to set it, by the size, by the square footage, uh, but make it, make it the same for everybody.
But if, totally understood, but if, would there be any issue with us saying that we have this rate? But we also would want, say a rate for a person that already has a rental? And if somebody wants a second rental, we could give them 10% off or 20% off?
You could, as long as it's applied.
To everybody. That's what I'm, that's the question. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I just don't think we should make a decision based off of one person.
I think that's a good idea, Jason.
I think we should, if, if we're interested in doing that, I think we need to say, yeah, you know, keep the rates as it is, but anybody that wants to rent a second space, then maybe there would be a, you know, a deduction in that rent for that, for that second rental. Like Eddie said, something's better than nothing for sure.
Well, should we table it again and come up with some, some concrete ideas?
Well, I, I know there is some. Yes, we did. There is some time pressure for her because she is in the insurance business and she is coming up on her busy season. And so she would like some resolution. All is her busy season.
Well, if she's coming up on a busy season, why does she want a reduction in the price?
Any thoughts, ideas from anybody else? Any, any ideas?
Well, if we got a vote on it tonight, I, I think we'll take the advice of the city manager.
Which is to rent it off for 650.
Just.
Right.
Rent each office as is, whatever the rental rate is.
Whatever the rate is, that's what it to be.
Is that your recommendation? Yes, sir. But if, if you want some additional information, you can table it and we'll try to get that to you for the September, we'll get that to you for the September meeting.
But I do like Jason's idea about if somebody rents a place and wants to rent another space, maybe we ought to give, give that person a discount. Maybe they want to enlarge their area for their business. I don't know.
I don't agree with that.
But, uh, I like that idea, so.
What's that? That, that was the only comp I could find that I think fit, so. The Patrick building is charging 650 for 450 square feet. This would be 650 for 548 square feet.
Does that put the other, the other offices, is that, is their rental rate going to be based off square foot too? Because that's where, that's where I see the problem would be. If we're going to do that one.
The other office that.
Just arbitrarily assign the value.
The other office that would be vacant, uh, we, as I understand it, we've wanted to keep that vacant for meeting space for, for people. If you wanted to have a private meeting down there. I don't know that we've looked at that. We could probably extrapolate, we could extrapolate the square footage cost and come up with something for that if you did want to rent it. But the, the other part is I, I don't know how much interest or how much we've marketed this space for rent either, too. That may be why we haven't had more people inquire.
Good point.
Perhaps you want to table it then. We'll revisit in September and I'll try to get some additional comps.
Okay. Motion to table?
I make a motion. We table it till September.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number 10, resolution for Hamlet Water and Sewer Project. We need to vote, make a motion on the adoption of resolution 2024 dash oh five.
I move that we accept and approve.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. City manager's report.
Just like to give just a brief update. I'm real proud of the work that staff has done the past couple of weeks. This past week, we had the remnants of a tropical storm blow through. Fire department was fairly busy with storm issues. They had two electrical hazards. They dealt with the wreck and downed trees. Our public works department also dealt with a lot of, a few downed trees. And then the week before that, um, our water and wastewater treatment plants, we had a significant storm. They both got struck with lightning. And, um, those crews were working extra time to get everything back up to speed. Uh, our water plant, um, still has, um, some of the electrical components are down and they're having to operate everything manually. Water's still safe to drink. It's clean, but it's, they're doing everything manually rather than electronics. Uh, when the storm first hit, um, we couldn't, um, treat water and we were purchasing some water from the county, but we're back up full. The tanks are full and running well. The wastewater treatment plant got hit at the same time and that's almost all fully operational now. But those folks worked very hard, um, to, um, keep the water and wastewater treatment plants running and I, I don't think, our, our citizens never knew they were an issue. So I think they, they deserve a lot of credit for that. The, uh, street department also cleaned out a lot of storm drains, but, um, storm wasn't as bad as we anticipated. But I think they did a, did a ju, good job of planning. I appreciate all their work, especially in those two utilities. That's, that's all I really have for this evening.
All righty. So comments from council? Mr. Martin?
Just briefly, I'd like to bring something before the council, mainly for your information and consideration. And that's, um, concerning the Hamlet Memorial Park. During the baseball season, American Legion, I talked with Chip Gordon, who is the coach for the team. And there were several conversations pertaining to the lighting at the field. The field is, 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 the lights are, are adequate, but there are some spots that are dark. And I might mention that those lights have been up there for probably 80 years. And there is some concern about the poles that are in place now, that have been in place since, since I can remember. And that's 80 years ago. So in doing so, I asked Chip Gordon to, uh, to find a, a company that does field lighting for, for, uh, baseball, softball parks and football parks or whatever they need to do, stadiums and stuff. And, uh, and I, I contacted, uh, Michelle Pressler. She was involved with the, uh, getting the contract for the painting of the caboose and the engine down at, at the park down here. And I thought that she would, would be a good one to try to help us get, uh, uh, some grant money for this project. And what I'm asking for is, I'm going to ask if it's permissible, and the council agrees, that, that we might be able to get a, a, a grant through the coal foundation. And if so, what I'm looking for is total amount. In other words, it shouldn't cost the city anything to be able to get the grant if, if we can get it. And so actually, uh, I talked with the city manager. He's aware of it and, but I wanted to bring it before the council, before we went any further or entered into any contracts or proposals or anything. Of course, we'd bring that back to the council for approval, of course, but I just wanted y'all to know about it in case, uh, when it comes up, you'll, you'll be aware of the situation. Whether we get it or not, I don't know. I hope we could. And if we could, that'd be a big plus for the park because we need a better lighting system up there. What's up there now is almost antiquated. I mean, it's, it will do, but sometime in the near future, we're going to have to re-light the park up there anyway. And I think this would be a good time to try to get it done. But I want to bring that before the council to get y'all's, um, more or less approval to continue to try to get a grant. Not that it's going to cost the city anything, but work on that.
Have you gotten any cost estimates?
Well, it's going to be in, it's going to be in excess of $150,000, I'm sure.
And that does all the field?
That's the, the whole field up there that will like the, the field as it is now, but much better with LED lighting and stuff like that. That's what all the parks are going to now is the LED lighting. And, uh, so I just want to get y'all's opinion or, 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 or get y'all's approval to continue to try to get this done. And like I say, if we get the grant, I mean, you know, it's.
It's a non-issue.
It ain't going to cost us nothing. Uh, well, it might cost, you know, some incidental fees and stuff. But I'm talking about the big major cost would be oh, well of $100,000. I'm talking in excess of 150 probably. But if y'all want me to continue and get Michelle to work on this and the city manager, I, I hope we can get that done if that's, if I get y'all's approval. I don't want to go no further with it. I don't want to break a proposal and, and, uh, you're not interested in doing it or don't want to do it. So what's your pleasure? Continue?
I think that was a huge recreational success for the city. It involved not only kids from Hamlet, but guys from Hamlet, but it also involved people from the surrounding communities. So it brought people in our county together. And even though it was hotter than I think I've ever been in my life, the crowds grew every game. And they enjoyed it and it was well attended and, you know, this, I think, and if the coal foundation's willing to fund it as part of the recreational opportunities for the county, I think that'd be great.
Well, I hope they'll fund it.
Well.
I don't know.
It's obviously something the city of Hamlet can't do by itself, so I hope the coal will.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's what I'm looking for.
Take a serious look. I think it's worth pursuing.
We got a shot at getting that done if y'all want me to, want us to continue with it. All, all I need is just approval from the council to proceed with getting a proposal and trying to see what we can do about relighting the park.
You have my vote to proceed.
You got my vote.
Okay, well. Mr. City Manager, you've heard that. So we will continue and try to get everything in order for maybe next month. A proposal that we can bring before the council and, and tell you what all exactly it's going to cost and who's going to do it and one thing and another. And then we'll proceed from there and go with the coal foundation and see what we can get. If we get it, fine. If we don't, well, back to square one.
All right.
That's all.
All right. Thank you.
It would be nice to have another sound system up there.
Well, okay.
I don't want more work on you, but.
Listen, I took, I, I've already done that. Because you're right. We do need another sound system, but I didn't want to bring it up, I spring that on y'all at one time. But I have got interested in that too. And, uh, and, uh, I did go ahead and talk to, uh, this, uh, Sun Sound, uh, about it. And they in the neighborhood is $6,000 for, for the, for the project. But my main goal is the lighting right now. If we can get the lighting, then I'm going, then I was going to worry about the sound.
Coming back.
But, but I, I, we are ahead of that. We all, we own that too. And, uh, that's going to be around $6,000. If we, you know, if, if y'all want to continue, that's what we're going to do. Try to get the grants and try to get all that worked in somehow. Well, it is, it ain't going to cost us nothing except incidental fees. I mean, it comes with. Well, I, no, that'd be covered supposedly, hopefully. I don't know yet. I'm just throwing this out. I can't tell you until maybe next month what it's going to do.
Bring it to us next month, too. But you got my support.
But anyway, that's, that's all I need. It would just bring that, your attention and, and get your approval to continue. So.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I'm all for that, Eddie. Thank you so much. I think it's, it's a great benefit. I don't have any, uh, um, information tonight to what I'm about to say, but I would definitely like us to, um, put some money into that Hamlet, uh, South Hamlet Park as well. So I definitely don't want to forget about them and, and make sure.
That we have some, some, uh, economics into that park as well, but I am all for that and I appreciate. And it is nothing like a good baseball game. Um, Ms. Michelle Roberts, thank you for being here. Thank you for investing into Hamlet. Minority owned business is so important. It builds relationships. It builds inclusiveness, um, wealth, relationships, all of that. So thank you. I can't wait to visit you. I'm coming to visit and I've heard about the food already. So thank you so much. Ms. Cross, thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Krim, thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments. And, um, the last thing I'll say is I need everybody here. I think we might be into one of our biggest, uh, elections ever. Not only on the presidential, but just here locally in North Carolina. So I need for us all to do our parts in making sure that everybody we know is registered to vote. If you know someone that's turning 18 before November 5th, make sure that they know that they will be able to vote. It's so important. This is, this is, it's so important. Okay. I, so many things we could say about that, but it's very important. But thank you guys for coming. Uh, one of the things we talk about is citizens coming to meetings. Just like Ms. Robinson said, Ms. Rob, what, Roberts, investing back. Thank you all for coming to meetings. Continue to come, even if you don't have comments. Even if you don't have nothing to say or you don't even know what's on the agenda. Come to the city council meeting so you can have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
I'd just like to thank all the attendees for coming and your interest forward and just be safe. That concludes mine.
All right. Ms. Covington?
Just, go ahead.
But they presented their case. Did they, how did they hear back from you all? Did you all make a decision or send a letter or what?
Mayor?
I don't think we can actually make a decision, but I think we can work with the city manager and, and the, and the committee. but I think we can work with the city manager and, and the, and the committee and the directors down there to, there, I don't care how flat you make a pancake, there's always two sides to every story. So we got to hear their side also. But, but they, they'll handle it. And we'll make sure that, we'll, we'll try to make things right. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Covington? But we're still having our meeting. Ms. Covington?
My comments, first of all, dealing with thanking the city employees for all they did last week and all the mess. And the week before in the storm, when we lost production of water, that was, that was pretty rugged. And as he said, we were forced to buy water from the county and the sewer system was, is still compromised as a result of it. And of course, that's going to be more issues and more expense, but that's what we do. And I also wanted to thank the people for coming. If you've got a concern, this is the place to address it. And if it's a concern that we can do anything about, we can't always fix everything, but we'll always listen. And I don't think there's ever anybody that's been told, no, you can't come voice your concerns to the city council in Hamlet. I appreciate you, Ms. Roberts. The light's right in front of your head, but I can see you. I'm so excited that you've chosen to invest yourself and your money in the community and the downtown area of Hamlet. And you might want to check up here at City Hall. You may have already done so. I don't know how long you've actually been here, since you bought the building, but we've got a facade grant that's available. The application was in our consent agenda tonight. So that's many, money that you might apply for as a grant to match, to fix up the facade of your building. And please keep us up to date with what you're doing and what, when we can come eat. We're not all about eating, but people who open restaurants excite us.
I don't want to interrupt. Do you have a soft opening coming or what? Something for us to look forward to?
Hopefully Labor Day.
Okay.
Hopefully what?
Hopefully Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Oh, okay. I couldn't hear what you said. But as I said, thanks again for your interest. And any way that we can facilitate your success, we'll be happy to do it. Thank you.
Mr. McLean?
Just the same thing. Shout out all the employees that went above and beyond with the, the weather that we've had, especially the, you know, the ones that were out working in it. Did a great job. Ms. Roberts, thank you again, I mean, for truly investing in our town and your town now. Like Councilwoman Covington said, that grant is, is being restarted back up. And please check with that. Ms. Webb right there would be somebody that you could talk to about that at City Hall. And then for the other folks that came, I mean, that's how local government works. People come, they, they voice concerns and we listen and then we act. And, you know, you may not see any action tonight or at any point in time, but the way it works is, like Eddie said, the, the manager will look into any complaints that we get and then that'll be taken care of with the parties that are involved, which is the person that said that they were in a conflict there and, and with our folks at the senior center. And that, I've, I've got no doubt that the manager would do a good job there. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you. I, too, just want to thank our city employees for all the preparation, police department, fire department, rescue squad, everybody that got us ready for the storm last week. Thankfully, we didn't have much. We were very fortunate. So, but yeah, that's all I, that's all I've got. So I need a motion to go in a closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
I move, move, go into closed session for NCAGS 143-318-11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.